Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everybody for joining us this evening for the regular public board meeting for the Board of Education for School District Number 73, the Kamloops Thompson, on this day, Monday, October the 21st, 2024. I can't believe how much time is flying. Before I call the meeting to order, I just want to take the opportunity to welcome everybody to our meeting. I also wanted to, I know we do this each time we meet publicly, but just really go over that our expected code of conduct is that everyone present in this meeting remain respectful at all times. Rude or foul language, an abusive or aggressive behavior such as outbursts will not be tolerated. We also consider inflammatory statements remarks of a racial or discriminatory nature and unsubstantiated, sorry, unsubstantiated allegations to be abusive behavior. Should this occur and I feel that the meeting is no longer manageable, I will call a short recess where staff, trustees, and invited guests will remove themselves from the meeting. If there are further disturbances, the RCMP will be contacted. Please ensure at this time that your cell phones are off and on silent so that this meeting is not interrupted. We also do not give our consent to be recorded, so please no recording devices being on at this time. Please notice while that the meeting is recorded at all times for streaming purposes, and it's something that people can go back and watch later if they're feeling that they've missed part of the meeting. So I also want to really take a chance to welcome, no, sorry, to respectfully honor and acknowledge that we are meeting this evening on the unceded territory of the Shekwepneq people, specifically to Kamloops, the Shekwepneq nation. I want to express my gratitude to the people of Kamloops nation who have really been the caretakers of this land since time immemorial. So thank you very much, everyone, for meeting us here this evening. I want to also note that we are missing a few trustees. Everyone actually is here and present, but some are joining us online this evening. So if they're not here around the table, we've got trustee Jewels, trustee Karpuk, trustee Sim, who are all joining us, sorry, trustee Sim and trustee McKelvey, who are all joining us online, and trustee Karpuk is here in person. I don't know why I always do this when I, I apologize. Anyway, so we're called to order. This evening, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the regular public meeting minutes from October the 7th, 2024, moved by trustee Karpuk, who's in the house, seconded by trustee Kang. Any comments, questions, or concerns about the minutes circulated in your packages this evening? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries anonymously. Thank you. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening. Moved by trustee Hickson, seconded by trustee Karpuk. Is there anything, trustees, that you wanted lifted from this evening's consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. Oh, sorry. Yes, trustee Sim.
I just wondered if it was appropriate to maybe lift AP 451.44, just for future consideration and language adjustment.
So trustee Sim has asked that we lift AP 451.44. That will go, where should that go in this evening's agenda then? Under new business? We will move it there. Trustee Sim, thank you. Thank you so much. Any other items that were, people were hoping to have lifted from the consent agenda as circulated this evening? All right, seeing none, I will call the question with that one item being lifted. All those in favor? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries anonymously. Thank you so much. Trustees, I'm looking for any, sorry, motion to adopt the agenda circulated this evening. Moved by trustee Ophi, seconded by trustee Karpuk. Are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda circulated? Trustee Kang?
Just one under 13, please.
Thank you. Trustee Hickson. Okay. Acting Secretary of Treasure, Talon?
One under number nine, please.
One under nine. I'll put that as 9.4. And for, yes, trustee Sim.
Just one under 13. Thank you.
All right, and in the chair's report, I will just make note that there was one additional item under the chair's report this evening that was not circulated in your package, being a Deepak correspondence letter. I will call the question. All in favor of the agenda as amended? Thank you, and opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Dr. Nixon, this moves on to item, us on to item next, which is the education topic, mental health in schools.
Thank you so much. Good evening, trustees, parents, staff, and community members. We are so fortunate to have Deanna Brady, District Principal of Inclusive Education, here this evening. She will lead tonight's presentation, which outlines the significant mental health initiatives in School District 73, which began really with the formation of a mental health working group in partnership with B.C. Children's Hospital and Kelty Mental Health. This collaboration led to the creation of a comprehensive mental health strategic plan, and this plan addresses five key priorities to ensure consistent mental health support across the district. And tonight, you'll hear about a focus on evidence-based practices and indigenous perspectives. So thank you also to Assistant Superintendent Michelle Mattis and District Principal Deanna Brady, who are here presenting, and they wanted me to mention on behalf also of Alex Berger, Social Emotional Learning Coordinator. So we are so looking forward to your presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Nixon. Good evening, everyone, Chair Grieve, Vice Chair Kershaw, and school trustees. My name is Deanna Brady, and I'm the District Principal of Inclusive Education. I'm here tonight to present our work on the mental health promotion in School District 73. Before I begin, I want to respectfully honor and acknowledge that we are meeting on the territory and on the lands of the Shekwepneq people, and it's an honor and a privilege to be able to do this work on behalf of School District 73. So we wanted to start off and really give you a framework for how we got here. So I want to share with you some exciting work that we've been, that we have going on in School District 73. And the bulk of this work started last year when we formed a mental health working group in collaboration with B.C. Children's Hospital and the Kelty Mental Health Group. The purpose for this collaboration was to develop a comprehensive School District 73 Mental Health Strategic Plan. This, this strategic plan focuses on identifying and addressing key mental health priorities within the district, ensuring a coordinated and consistent approach to mental health support across all schools. And for us and the working group, it was important that this document be reflective of our district's strategic plan, and we believe we are close to that for sure. So when we take a look at our, our work, and you take a look at this slide right here, and when we were able to meet with stakeholders, and we met with various stakeholders, we identified five key priority areas. And for each area, we established clear objectives and initiatives aligned with evidence-based practices, including the integration of indigenous ways of knowing and being. And those are integrated in every one of those, of those priorities. So this evening, we're going to take a deep dive into Priority Area 2, which focuses on increasing the capacity for mental health promotion in classrooms. Before we begin and really get into the heart of this presentation, we always like to start these presentations really making sure that we highlight the importance and the reminder that mental health promotion includes social emotional learning, as well as mental health literacy. So by integrating mental health literacy and social emotional learning into the classroom, we create a more inclusive, supportive environment that prioritizes students' overall development and prepares them for success both inside and outside of school. While SEL is not a set program, and it isn't, mental health literacy is. You find that embedded in our curriculum all the way through. So why teach mental health literacy? Childhood and early adolescence are critical periods for the onset of identification of mental and neurological disorders. This makes these young years roughly age seven to 11 crucial for equipping young people with skills that foster personal awareness, helping them to understand and regulate their emotions, as well as competencies that support healthy relationships, ethical decision-making, and responsible behaviors. These are the building blocks for long-term success, both in their personal and in their academic lives. So by recognizing and addressing mental health needs early on, and by supporting social emotional development, we can help set children on a positive trajectory for their future well-being and their overall success. So last year, the newly developed Evidence-Based Elementary Mental Health Literacy Resource was released, receiving endorsement from the Ministry of Education and Childcare. The Elementary Mental Health Literacy School Resource is a Canadian resource that is evidence-based and aligns with the Grade 9 Mental Health Literacy High School Curriculum. And you'll remember, a few years back, we spoke specifically about the Grade 9 Mental Health Literacy components. So this is just newly released. So this resource was developed in direct response to the request for these skills and these competencies to be taught to children at a younger, at a younger age. So now we move on to the implementation piece of our district and how we build capacity for teacher competence. So last year, last year, last October, the Healthy Promoting Schools and the Social Emotional Learning Coordinator, along with multiple members of the Inclusive Education Service Team, co-planned a Healthy Literacy Forum for over 600 Grade 6 students and their teachers. During the forum, teachers and students were introduced to the Elementary Mental Health Literacy Resource and had an opportunity to experience it in action. The top right photo captures two of our Aboriginal family counselors facilitating these sessions. What you don't see in these pictures is we also had our school and family consultants that were doing groups, much like what you see in that top right-hand corner. We had various people, even from our curriculum team, that were supporting some of this work, whether it be in the planning or the actual facilitating of sessions. So it was really a group effort to get that off the ground. To support teachers in implementing the resource, the Healthy School Promoting Schools Coordinator hosted a series of online lessons. For three weeks, teachers and, and their students participated in virtual sessions covering a different modular of learning each week. Following the three online sessions, every teacher received the materials and the resources to cover the remaining two modulators, with onsite support from the Mental Health Schools' Coordinator. In total, last year, we had 14 classes who participated in the series, which this involved over 350 students. Before the first session, just to give you a little bit of a, you know, to experience what those students actually experienced when they were participating in this, and you can't see it, for whatever reason, our screen is blocking out certain parts of this, I'm not sure why. But before the first session, all students received a Student Activity Workbook filled with activities, discussion questions, writing prompts, and spaces to draw or color. On the right-hand side of this slide, you can see that one of the virtual sessions in action. With the help of the District Technology Coordinator, we set up online sessions that allowed real-time discussion and brainstorming between classrooms. That was the really cool part, giving students a chance to interact with peers from other schools. This inter-school interaction was a unique opportunity for students to hear different perspectives and share their own experiences. After each session, teachers provided feedback to the coordinator, helping us make improvements along the way to ensure that each session was more engaging and more effective. On the left-hand side of this screen, you will see that the work of a Grade 6 student. This illustration shows how a student feels when his stress response is triggered. His heart races, he gets butterflies in his stomachs, in his stomach, sorry, his breathing speeds up, his ears ring, and his hands and feet start to shake. What really stands out here is the student's level of self-awareness, and that's really what we're trying to do through this Mental Health Literacy Curriculum, is increase student self-awareness, because we know that that's a key part of mental health literacy, because it helps students manage and cope with stress, and it also helps them recognize that they need to reach out, or when they need to reach out to an adult for support. Another important part of this drawing is that it shows how students feel when the body is calm, and we also want to be really clear with students that they recognize those moments as well. Because when we can recognize the state of calm, it's just as important as recognizing stress, as it empowers students to find a balance, regulate their own emotions, and take care of their well-being. Developing this understanding early on helps students become more resilient and better equipped to handle challenges in the future. Here you see an example of a student activity where students list the various coping, thinking, and problem-solving strategies they feel will help them respond and to manage stress. What makes this resource unique is that it reframes how we think and we talk about stress, shifting the focus from avoiding stress to understanding it is a normal part of life. It also teaches students positive coping strategies to manage stress effectively, including how to deal with it proactively before it comes, becomes overwhelming. This approach helps students build resiliency, empowering them to face challenges with greater confidence and control. By practicing these strategies early on, students are better equipped to navigate stress both in and out of the classroom. And you can see, and I wish that you could see it all, but we had a quote from a teacher as well, which really stresses the importance of this work, because what we're trying to do is to move beyond, you know, the strategies of dealing with stress, deep breathing, to really, again, going back to acknowledging, what is our body doing, and how am I going to respond to stress? Because stress is normal, everybody has it, and it's okay. It's how we deal with it that's important. And that's the, that's the strength of this, of this curriculum. So this year, the early, or the Elementary Mental Health Literacy Resource modules and lessons are well underway and have already been delivered in classrooms across the district. This photo was taken two weeks ago at McQueen Lake, where a Grade 7 student from Lloyd George culminated their learning by identifying common stress triggers and creating personalized sets of coping cards that they can keep at their desk. Each set of cards, each set of cards is color-coded, allowing students to quickly identify their quiet, creative, or active strategies when they need them most. What makes these coping cards so effective is their accessibility. Having these tools readily available helps students respond to stress in real time, promoting independence and managing their emotional well-being. This hands-on activity not only reinforces the strategies they've learned, but also empowers them to make mindful choices during stressful moments. So looking ahead this year, the mental, our Healthy Promoting Schools Coordinator will continue to facilitate everyday anxiety strategies for educators, and we've talked a lot to this group about the, about ease, that's going to continue as well. And currently, Alex is supporting schools two days a week, working closely with teachers to integrate anxiety reduction strategies into their daily routines. On the right are two examples of student work that was recently created. After reading a short story, Grade 2 students were asked to identify their worries, then they created portraits of their worries and gave them names. Example, Walter Worry. By imagining worries and anxiety as something separate from themselves, like an overprotective friend, students can make these feelings feel more manageable. At the next school leaders' meeting, school leaders will receive a newly created ST 73 Continuum for Mental Health Support one-page resource. This resource was developed by the Mental Health Promoting School Coordinator in collaboration with Inclusive Education Services, mental health clinicians, school and family consultants, inclusion support teachers, and Aboriginal family consultants. The goal of this resource is to provide teachers with clear outline of Tier 1 universal classroom strategies, lists available for Tier 2 programs and supports, and to ensure a consistent approach to accessing Tier 3 services for students with more intensive needs. On December the 2nd, the staff at Summit Elementary will participate in a whole-school EASE professional development workshop, where they will learn practical strategies to support students in managing anxiety and stress within the classroom environment. Similar to last year, the Mental Health Promoting Schools Coordinator will host a series of online and hybrid learning sessions for Elementary Mental Health Literacy Resource. Each cohort will include 15 classrooms covering all five modulators. This first cohort will take place in November and December. The second is going to be in January and February, and the third group will run in April and May. On February the 7th, the Healthy Promoting Schools Coordinator, in collaboration with the Aboriginal Education Department, will host an afternoon workshop focused on mental well-being and connecting to the land. This workshop will provide participants with tools to support both mental health and cultural awareness, emphasizing the importance of nature and healing and self-care. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, District Principal Brady. I know that I, I know I have questions.
Sure.
I will look to others first. Trustee Karpuk.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's good to see that this is happening in our district. I'm just wondering if your working group is also in contact with the group that is trying to get the Foundry Program, the Foundry Center, off the ground, and how these two different initiatives would, will work together, so that not only are we having the mental health within the schools, but we also have the contact in the wider community that, and, and where we're at with that.
So this group, our working group, consists of our mental health clinicians, Aboriginal family counselors, school and family consultants. So really, right now, the group that is working with the B.C. Mental Health, or sorry, Children's Hospital and the Kelty Group, that's, that consists of our internal kind of working group. And the function that the Kelty Group and Children's, Children's Hospital and the Kelty Group serve for our district is to really help ensure that we are in alignment. And so the Foundry, our connection with the Foundry is, it's actually done through myself and through Assistant Superintendent Mattis. We meet with them regularly. They're just starting to get up and running. And so if you take a look, and I don't know if I can switch back to our presentation, and you take a look at our, oh, I don't know how I can get us back to, give me a second here. I wanted to show you the, going back to this. So when you look at our five priorities, I just went into detail about the second priority, which is increasing the capacity for mental health promotion. And you, if you take a look at the other priorities, encouraging student voice, supporting staff well-being, and reducing barriers to enhanced supports, that's really this, this fifth priority right here, is where we'll be doing a lot of work with the Foundry. This strategic plan is not intended to all happen in one year. It's intended to be kind of rolled out systematically, so it's manageable. The feedback we're getting from groups is that if we try to do all of these things at once, it's too much. It's not manageable. And so the Foundry is going to come into play, and we're in constant communication with the Foundry. And once we get, starting to work on that specific priority, they're going to be a big part of that for sure. Thank you for the question.
Before I go to trustee Sim, just to, to clarify, when we're talking about Foundry, we're really talking about a tier of supports as well, like within, so without falling tier one, two, or three in terms of it, it would be like across the board?
It could potentially. It really depends on how the Foundry is going to operate here in Kamloops. My understanding is that depending on the community, it really can look different. And so again, the Foundry is just in their beginning stages right now. They've, they've secured a location, and they're starting to work on those other pieces. And so they attend every one of our cast meetings, give us regular updates as to where they are at and what services they're hoping to provide. So I think that's why that fifth priority, and it doesn't mean that it's like fifth on our list, it just means it's one of five very important priorities. They're, they're going to be a big part of that once we really know what they're going to be able to offer and what that's going to look like in our community.
Thank you very much. Trustee Sim.
Thanks very much. Lots of great information there. My question is, and I didn't see it, is where does the program Worry Bugs fit into this initiative?
Right. That's a great question, trustee Sim. Thanks for bringing that up. That's a really big component of, of the work that our mental health clinicians do in our district. And so Worry Bugs is actually something, I think we're running three of those sessions this year alone. And so that would really and truly, that really starts again with that increasing capacity for the mental health promotion in our, on our second priority. So our mental health clinicians are working directly with schools, and they have been able to get a list of students that they think are going to benefit from that, that group. And that one is run not during the school day, but we're running the Worry, the Worry Bugs, so that's for kindergarten and Grade 1 students. We're running that outside of school hours. The program that's running during school, trustee Sims, is Worry Dragons, and that one is the one that we will send our team to a school. The school has already identified students that they think would be appropriate for that particular group. And then we work with that school group for six weeks, one, meeting with them weekly. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did. I just do have a supplemental of that, because I think that, you know, one of the challenges is that mental health has now become such a broad definition, and sometimes we don't, we don't always put the focus on that. As you said in your, your presentation, stress is a part of life. Like, that is just something we have to manage. And is that really mental health, or is that mental wellness and some of those tools? So to follow up in the question, how do we determine what schools are targeted for this? Because it seems like it's something that almost needs to be embedded, or is that just too lofty and too ambitious?
Well, I think right now, for Worry Bugs in specific, look, we, we are targeting, it's open to all schools. Anybody can participate in that. I guess you would have to be able to get to the session. Parents are responsible for bringing their child. They come along with them as well, because there's a lot of education around parents as well, that, you know, again, it's okay that your little one might have a worry, and it's, that, that's just basically how do we teach them how to manage that, and how to manage our own worries and stress as parents. And so that opportunity is open to everyone. They just have to, they have to sign up. So it's not targeted for a specific school. The, where we target specific schools is with Worry Dragons, and we really rely on our school teams to be identifying and reaching out to us to say, you know what, we've got a group of students. We, we've got strong Tier 1 strategies in our school. We're doing EASE as a whole, like our whole school is involved in EASE. All of our teachers are trained. We, we're making that a focus of the work we're doing. That's part of our work to address social emotional learning and mental health in our building. And we still have students that we think need additional support, and so they would be asking for Worry Dragons to be run in their, in their school. So that's how schools can access it.
Great, thank you. And Chair Grieve, I'll just save a third question for after another round, if that's all right.
Thank you very much, trustee Sim. Yes, trustee Hickson.
Thank you so much, Director Brady. This is awesome. District Principal Brady, so sorry. This is so cool. I love seeing this happen, because I, I struggled a lot with mental health when I was going through the school system, and I had to do a lot of work in my adult life to, to manage that. So it's amazing to see this happen here. I just want a bit more clarity on how we target schools for this particular curriculum, the Elementary Mental Health Resource. Is that completely across the district, or again, are we just targeting specific schools for this curriculum?
Thank you for the question, trustee Hicks. This is for the entire district. And if you recall from the presentation, we did a kickoff series where all Grade 8, Grade 6 students were invited to TRU, and we had all Grade 6 students at TRU. We had over 600 of them in TRU, and that was specifically to kind of kickoff and promote this curriculum for Grade 6. So that was one way that we did it. Then the follow-up was the virtual sessions, where schools then could sign up and, and work with work with Alex through those lessons that we outlined in the presentation. So it really just is up to schools to be able to sign up. And what she has planned this year, as, as we stated, is to have three rounds of the same, of, of sort of the same structure, so that we have lots of opportunities for schools to be able to participate, be able to get the direct teaching that Alex is going to lead them through, and then give them the confidence to be able to carry on the work on their own, essentially. Yep, supplemental?
For that clarification, that was helpful. I'm just curious, how are we tracking the effectiveness of this? Do we have any data points that we're starting with? Are we, are we learning how this is making our students more calm, or happy, or energized?
Yeah, you know, collecting data has been a really important part of our work, and both Alex and I have made sure that after every one of these sets, we ask for feedback from teachers, which they are happy to give. We just showed you one example of some feedback that we got from one of our teachers, Mrs. Gully, as you saw. And we really do use that to be able to refine our practices and also make sure that we can, you know, expand our, the way that we are supporting our, our schools. And we also really believe that student voice is important. And so she has a way of collecting all of our, all of the student voice, and really sort of capturing how these sessions are landing with our students. And that's really how we determine how to move forward.
Is it supplemental related to the question you've already asked, or is it a new question, Trustee Hickson? It's, pardon me? Okay, so I'll come back to you, Trustee Karpak. I'll come back to you, actually, because you've already asked as well. Is there anyone who has not asked? I know that, okay, I'm actually going to ask you, if it's okay, a question, then I will go back. I've got Trustee Sim waiting, then Trustee Karpak, then Trustee Hickson. So my question is just actually around the use of language, and I know we've talked about this in the past, mental health versus mental wellness. And knowing that I even hear them interchangeable a little bit in terms of the presentation, where we're talking about increasing capacity for mental health promotion. Are we promoting mental health, or are we promoting mental wellness? Because the two can actually, like, mental illness can actually occur at the same time as mental wellness. You can actually have a diagnosed mental illness, but still be mentally well, in terms of the way that you're coping and functioning and the different aspects. So I guess my, my wonder with this, are we creating our own, like, this strategic plan? Is this our language? Is it something that we're taking specifically from something else? And are, so maybe I'll ask that first, and then my second question is, are we being cognizant of the differences between mental health and mental wellness? And I know that with other areas, substance use disorders, substance affected individuals, we're using, we're really seeing a change in the language, because we're often seeing that we don't think it's going to be stigma attached to it, but the opposite of what we're using would mean that someone is unwell, or that someone does not have mental health, when it's actually not necessarily the case. So I'm just sort of curious to know where we're, where we're getting this, the labels from, in terms of how we're, we're labeling these things.
Right.
Yeah.
Let me just start with that piece, because I think we take our direction really from the ministry. And so we try to keep the language consistent for, for, you know, how the ministry is, you know, giving us the information. So that's where we start. I would, I would have to say that overall, we are looking at mental health, you know, promotion and the way that we want to be able to make sure that we aren't, you know, placing stigmas on people who, who might have different mental health struggles. And so they're even being really cautious in this curriculum that we don't actually talk about, we don't refer to it like mental illness. And you won't see it being referred to in that way. And so I think the curriculum itself is being really cognizant of exactly what, what you're talking about. And so our job is really just to promote awareness that there's a multitude of ways that we can take care of ourselves, and we want to be able to give strategies to students and to teachers to be able to do that in a way that feels good for, for individuals, right? Because it's going to look different for me than it would be maybe for you. So I think that's the overarching sort of goal of, of mental health promotion, and we, we call it mental health literacy, right? That's the, that's how they refer to it in the, in the curriculum, because we want to expand people's knowledge about their own mental health, in, in all the shapes and forms that that may come. So back to your question about the, the priorities, those were established and created through the working group. And so that's really where we've taken our lead, is the feedback that we've gotten from, from the various groups that we have communicated this plan with. And so we feel like we've, we've sort of hit the mark there, and we also feel confident that all of these priorities are so nicely linked to our district strategic plan, which was really important to us. So I, I feel like we're on the right track as far as, you know, keeping in line with what the ministry is asking from us, and also responding to our community, which is what you see up there.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Trustee Sim, and then Trustee Karpak, and then Trustee Hickson. Trustee Sim.
Thanks very much. I just want to go back to the Foundry, and I think that what you were saying is, is that each Foundry is going to have some individual characteristics to the community. Is, is, and I can't remember if we, we had a presentation on Foundry that counseling would be available, but it would be for a very short term, it wouldn't be ongoing. Is that your understanding, or is it still too new to really land on anything?
Honestly, Trustee Sim, I think it's too soon for me to comment on it. I just don't know where the Foundry is at right yet with all of the services they're going to be providing. Is counseling supposed to be part of it? That's my understanding. To what capacity, what it's going to look like, how we would access it, those are the things that they're working on, I think, as we speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Karpak.
I'm just wondering, with the virtual and in-person sessions, are we looking at some of our school-based data from our student surveys and such to potentially target schools and areas that have indicated, or that students have indicated that they're having higher rates of stress and such as priority areas?
Absolutely. That's something that Alex and I look at all the time, is look at our data sources that we collect as a district. That absolutely informs us and helps us, you know, reach out to those schools and ensure that they are supported. So that's, that's absolutely one way. And, and those were, those would be schools that we would reach out to as sort of priority. But then we also want to make it available for other schools that are, you know, just themselves internally, thinking that this is something that their student body can, can benefit from. So I think we sort of are able to hit both.
Thank you. Trustee Hickson.
So much. I, I'm not sure who to direct this question to entirely, because I know that we've done mental health literacy for parents in the past. I don't know if that's part of your team. I was just curious, what is a general turnout for that? And is this related to this program at all, where we're trying to identify mental health in young kids as it's manifesting as they get into adolescence and late adolescence?
Yeah. Yes, that is definitely related to my team and my portfolio. And so we work, you know, I try every year to make sure that for our parent engagement sessions, we have something that is offered around mental health. Sometimes it will be, it will take on a form as Chair Greve had mentioned, we'll do, we just did a session on, you know, sleeping and habits for online, for online usage for teens. And so that was something that we heard from our community. Parents are really struggling with this, so we wanted to respond, and we provided a parent engagement session with respects to that. We have one coming up in November, I'm just waiting to get the details on it, around addiction and supporting youth, and what, what parents can do to support their, their young people who are, you know, starting to get involved in some pretty risky, risky behavior. And so those are, those are typical sessions that we will offer, and we always have one in May. And I usually invite Andrew Baxter, who really does speak and does, and if you get a chance to hear him speak, you should, you should join in on that parent engagement session. He's fantastic. And he really does a great job of sort of, again, normalizing the, all of our responsibility around our own mental health. He does a beautiful job of it. It's a great presentation. He keeps you for an hour and gives parents lots of information. So I feel like we, we do a lot around mental health and supporting our families. And again, I always say this everywhere I go, if people have ideas for other topics, tell me. And then I work on trying to find, you know, presenters to come and support our parents.
Yes.
Thank you so much. That's an awesome answer. And can you just quickly go over the turnout rate? And is it good? Do you think that there's room for improvement on our communication side?
Our communication team does a brilliant job. We have really good turnout for our parent engagement sessions. Oh, gosh, I, I didn't come with the actual data, but I will tell you that last year, the presentation for Andrew Baxter, we were up to probably about forty or fifty participants. We would never get that in person, we just wouldn't. And so we like the online format. I know it's not ideal, but I always feel that it gives our outline areas, those parents, opportunities to have access to some really quality presentations and be a part of some of the initiatives that are happening in town. So that's why we've stuck to that, to that venue for, for doing these parent engagement sessions. So I think the outcome, or the, the participation rate's pretty good. Yep.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. This has been incredibly helpful. I, I wanted to just say from, from my perspective, having an opportunity to sit and hear a number of these presentations over the last few years, it is really nice to hear sort of slowing things down and taking a look at, I don't want to say limiting the initiatives, but taking a look at actually focused initiatives, instead of bringing in so many where people, staff, even families are feeling overwhelmed in terms of, how many things do I access to actually know that I'm hitting all of the marks? And this is really something where I think, I would imagine that it would be easier to get even outcome measures around whether or not a specific program is, is getting to Trustee Hickson's point, the kind of outcomes that, that you're hoping for when you're looking at people's receiving, and whether that's quantitative or qualitative results. So I want to thank you for that. My one, I guess, ask, or suggestion, I don't know whether or not it's something that would have any, any traction, but if there was ever a way to educate students, families, caregivers on what it means to actually access support, and that idea that just because a support is suggested to you and you access it, doesn't mean that it necessarily is going to be the right fit for you, and that that's not a, it's not a failing in the person, the student, the family who's accessed it. Sometimes it's about being a consumer, and, and that there is a lot to be learned from feeling comfortable saying, this actually isn't working for me, but I'm going to keep looking. And how do we support people in the continued quest for the right fit? I don't know if that's a part of your curriculum, but I would, that's my one ask. Just because we do often hear from people who will access one support and say, it didn't work for me, and that's where we stop.
Yeah.
And tap out and say, counseling is not for me, or that kind of edu, psychoeducation is not for me, instead of recognizing it may be just the wrong fit for that individual.
Thank you.
I don't know if I have a right to ask that, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So thank you very much for that. Dr. Nixon, does that conclude your agenda, or your education topic this evening?
I guess it doesn't. Thank you very much to the team. They always do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We say this every night, you're welcome to stay, but you're free to leave as quickly as possible. Yeah, you're welcome. Do you, do you want a Girl Guide cookie on your way out the door? Right? You're good? We can pass some down, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to item next, we have no public inquiries, position, sorry, positions, oh my goodness. Petitions or written presentations, we have no parent advisory groups or district parent advisory groups this evening, which moves us on to reports from Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Nixon, this is your agenda item.
Yes, thank you very much. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. So as per Board Policy Two, role of the Board, additional requirements, the Board shall review the student enrollment and staffing reports and be made aware of how students are supported to achieve success. At the in-camera Board Meeting on October seventh, the Board learned that the reason for the three hundred thousand additional priorities for inclusive education is that we require additional teacher FTE to support increased numbers of English language learners and students with diverse needs. I'd now ask Assistant Superintendent Mattis to provide the Board with a report that provides an overview of how these additional allegations are proposed to be used. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Nixon. Through you, Chair Greve to the Board. The district's projected in actual enrollment numbers for students with diverse needs are as follows, you can see in the chart. We have twelve hundred and fifty-six students currently enrolled who qualify for Level One, Two, or Three funding. The number of students in Levels Two and Three have increased, and the number of students in Level One has decreased by one student. There are also four hundred and thirty-two students currently enrolled who qualify for ELL support, which is an increase of twenty-four students. In October, the district allocated an additional twelve certified education assistants, an additional point six FTE learning assistance resource teacher to provide additional support in schools for students with diverse needs from funding already included in the budget. We also have a small reserve of FTE available for incoming students with diverse needs to the equivalent of two point five FTE for our certified education assistants, and a one point oh FTE for a learning assistance resource teacher. However, we do have a need to increase teaching staff to address English language learners' needs. This allocation would be split among several schools with language enrichment teachers. What I'm proposing is the Board of Education approve using regular operating funds to increase teaching staff by one point nine FTE to address English language learners' needs. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Mattis. Trustees, this agenda item came with a recommendation on page thirty-three of the package that was circulated. Before we look at entertaining a motion, are there any questions or discussion that needs to take place before we look at a motion being put on the floor? All right, I'm not seeing any. Vice Chair Kershaw, I will go to you. Sorry, you would like to move the motion? Okay. So Vice Chair Kershaw, you are moving that the Board of Education approves using regular operating funds to increase teaching staff by one point nine FTE to address English language learners' needs, seconded by Trustee Karpak. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing no discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? I'm going to say that I believe that the folks online are in favor, just because I'm not hearing any opposition. With that, seeing no opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item next, Dr. Nixon is yours as well.
Thank you. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. In the two thousand twenty-two to twenty-seven district strategic plan, the Board is committed to fostering partnerships that directly support student and staff well-being. One longstanding partnership has been in place with the United Way and Kamloops Thompson Board of Education. Our district has supported the United Way as a partner that designates staff donations to programs and supports for students and families. This year's United Way Giving Campaign will run from October sixteenth until December twentieth, encouraging our staff to consider supporting the United Way by making either a one-time dono, donation, sorry, or setting up an ongoing donation through payroll. Director Eisner has provided a letter within the Board package. It was sent to all employees on the, on October sixteenth and explains the value of the partnership. This item is for information.
Trustees, this agenda item was presented for information purposes. Are there any questions for Dr. Nixon on this agenda item before moving on? All right, I'm seeing no questions. Thank you very much, Dr. Nixon. Item next is yours as well, eight point three.
Thank you so much. Through you, Board Chair Greve to the Board. And as for Board Policy Two, role of the Board, Section nine point one zero, the Board shall approve the acquisition and disposition of district land and buildings. So as the public is aware, the Board has advertised that it is interested in consultation on three properties, Parcress Parks, Sahaly Park, and Little Fort Elementary School. Turning to the status section of the report, the Board received a consultation plan that is now looking to be extended from October eleventh, when it originally started, to November twelfth. And in that plan, there is an opportunity to engage in a webinar. So the webinar is proposed to take place on October twenty-ninth, six to eight P M, and the purpose of the webinar is a And the purpose of the webinar is a special invitation to the parents and staff of our community to simply participate and ask any questions you might have. Director McDonald will be at this portion of the consultation. So in addition to the survey that is already out there, we will re-release the survey as well as offer this consultation to ensure that everybody's had an opportunity to ask and have their questions answered. This report is for recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, you'll find the recommendation for this report is on page forty-three of the packages circulated. Before we look at entertaining a motion this evening, I'm wondering if there are any questions for Dr. Nixon or even for Director McDonald on this agenda item as presented before we look at a motion? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone who wants to move? Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw.
I'll move the recommendation in the report.
So Vice Chair Kershaw moves that the board approves the extension of the disposal of real property consultation to November twelfth, 2024, to enable parents and community members to join a webinar on October twenty ninth, 2024 about the three parcels of land and then submit comments by survey. Moved by Vice Chair Kershaw, seconded by trustee Kang. Any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Dr. Nixon, item next is yours as well. Eight point four, transportation.
Thank you so much. As you know, as per board policy seven, three point eight five with respect to trustee inquiries, questions relevant to any matter may be brought to the chair or through the chair to any board member or official. Board Chair Grieve asks for clarification of the cost of field trips based on the recent increase in per kilometer field trip costs. As was shared at the regular public meeting on September twenty-third, the board approved an increase to the per kilometer field trip rates, which had stayed the same for several years. The rate was thirty-five cents a kilometer and when compared to the provincial average of a dollar twenty-nine kilometer, our rate was low. The increased, sorry, the increase approved was to add nineteen cents a kilometer, making the new rate fifty-four cents a kilometer. The new rate is still only forty percent of the average cost provincially or almost sixty percent lower than the average cost provincially is another way to look at it. Because there have been social media posts about field trip cancellations due to the recent increase in per kilometer rate for field trips and some students not being able to afford the costs, it's really important for us to clarify how field trip costs are calculated to bring clarity to these questions that are appearing online. So if you will notice, when a field trip is booked, the hourly costs of driver's wages, meal allowances, accommodations when required and a per kilometer fee are billed to the school. To compare the impact of the increase in a per kilometer field trip rate, we actually chose two that were brought up through social media and or through emails. So a comparison of an overnight trip to Vancouver and a day trip to B C Wildlife Park have been estimated below. Using the chart in the, in the board package, if twenty students are going on an overnight trip to Vancouver and are traveling by bus, the total cost changes from our old rate resulting in $247.80 and the new rate resulting in the trip cost of $382.32 or change, total change of 134.52. Each student would therefore see an increase in this trip of $7.48 for their field trip cost. However, we actually took an example that was used either by email or online and it was to go on a field trip from Dufferin Elementary to the Wildlife Park. So again, when we compared the old rate to the new rate, it was an increase of $9.88 for the entire trip, which was a sixty-four cent increase for the student, the individual student. I'm just gonna go to the bottom of the memo because we also did have a question about why our field trips being canceled for out of country. So I do want to know that, do want you to know that we've clarified that a recent out of country field trip was canceled due to an increase in cost of airfare and a round trip coach bus, not a school bus, representing a combined cost of an extra $600 per student. So the school is considering a smaller trip within B C later. But the last example of a field trip cost was unrelated to the per kilometer field trip increase that we just described. And finally, it is really important to know that if there is any family who requires support to be able to go on a field trip, the board had approved setting aside $47,392 in addition to the remainder of Student and Family Affordability Funds to offset these costs for families. And how the family can can access this is there is a form and it's linked in the board report, but it also is a form that is in A P five oh six, student financial assistance online or going directly to the school principal who will actually expedite the process. And I am happy to answer any questions the board may have and so is Assistant Secretary Treasurer Talan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I look to trustees to see whether or not they have any questions about this, Dr. Nixon, I want to thank you for for this report. I know that I had reached out to you because of information that had been sent to me. And again, I think from the sounds of what you've explained this evening, looking at the per kilometer rate increase for a trip is not per kilometer for every student who is on that bus. So where people were saying initially like, well, it's going to increase my my travel like ten to fifteen dollars just for my, my students. So it's every student and the some of the, the information that was sent back to me was that this was a way of clawing back dollars and things like that. And the cancellation of field trips happened directly as a result of this. So I really appreciate the clarification. I don't know if trustees have any questions on this agenda item that was presented for information purposes this evening. All right, seeing none. Thank you very much for that, Dr. Nixon. Does that conclude your agenda items for this evening?
I guess it does. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Moving on to item next, we've got reports from Secretary Treasurer. So Acting Secretary Treasurer Talan, these agenda items are yours. Nine point one, the quarterly financial reports.
Thank you, Chair Grieve. To you through the through you to the board. Included in the green embargoed package is item nine point one, the quarterly financial report. Just a quick overview. There's some background information provided for the board's information. And most recently, at the October seventh in camera meeting, the board requested that a quarterly financial report be brought forward to the October twenty first regular public board meeting. And so at September thirtieth, as part of the quarterly financial report, the operating fund is reporting a deficit of five million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars compared to the operating fund deficit at September twenty twenty-three of five million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand. So we're in a comparable situation financially, but within that, it's important to note that there were two changes in practice. One, we are recording or expensing our benefits each month as they are paid, which prevents any adjustments at the end of the year. But it does mean that we are recognizing expenses faster than we would have been at September twenty twenty-three. The other change is that we've also closed the local capital accounts. And so expenses such as portable moves that would be normally recorded in local capital are being included in the operating fund report. And again, that prevents us from relying on a surplus at the end of the year to fund those transactions. Taking a look at page six of the embargoed package is the quarterly financial report and I just want to draw your attention to a few of the line items. So overall, total revenue is at twenty-four million one hundred and sixty-four thousand. Teacher salaries are at eight million, six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five as or ten, ten point two percent of budget. Benefit costs at five million, six hundred and nine thousand are sixteen point four three percent of budget for just about two percent higher than this time last year, which is the impact of our practice, our change in practice. Looking at the supplies and services, the second line from the top, capital planning is three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars has been spent so far and that includes portable moves which occurred in July and August of 2024. So this past summer, as well as some information technology expenses, the the both of which were normally recorded in local capital. Replacement equipment. Just the fourth line is we've spent one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars or forty-one, just under forty-two percent of the budget. And that's a line item that's been reduced with the district level budget reduction plan. And facility repairs and maintenance. It's the other item of note. So eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars has been spent or just under twenty-five percent of the annual budget. That's about a hundred thousand dollars lower than this time last year. So you'll note that each of the, the line items does have a note referencing, just providing more background information or detailed information about the, the results to date as well as a comparison to a three-year average of budget to actual results. This report was just for information, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for this information. Trustees, the quarterly financial report was presented this evening for information purposes. I'm wondering if there are any questions on the report as presented this evening. Yes, trustee Karpuk.
I'd just like to point out that even though it says we're in a deficit, that's really actually due to timing of funding from the ministry and that this is typical and has been a historic trend and pattern for the entire time that I have been a member of the board, that the ministry has, the timing of funds from the ministry is always slow at the beginning of the year and that's why we're always in a deficit position in September.
Through you, Chair Grieve. Thank you. Trustee Karpuk, that is correct. We do receive a smaller proportion of our funding in the summer months from the ministry, which as the enrollment is confirmed through September and again, there's another funding confirmation in December, we receive a higher proportion of income during the school year. Thank you.
Any other questions from trustees on this agenda item which was presented for information purposes? All right, I'm seeing none. Moving on to item next, nine point two, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget report.
Thank you, Chair Grieve. Also within the embargoed package is item nine point two, budget report. So over the last two weeks, Superintendent Nixon and I have been working with Secretary Treasurer from Abbotsford, Ray Velestak. On October ninth, Dr. Nixon and I had a phone call where Secretary Treasurer Velestak reviewed our financial information with us and did some analysis. And then again, on October fifteenth, Secretary Treasurer Velestak came to the board office and spent the day analyzing and validating the operating fund budget with me. And so during that review, I'm just gonna share my screen. What a big focus was, was comparing our actual results to what our budget had been set up. And so you'll see in this chart. My eyes are getting tired, I think. So the three columns on the left are June actual results for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. You'll notice that our teacher salaries of seventy-two million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand at June twenty twenty-two increased to seventy-six million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand at June twenty twenty-three. It's about a, a six point two five percent increase, which is the negotiated increase in the collective agreement for that year. And again, looking at June twenty twenty-four, our actual salaries increased to eighty-three million, sixty-seven thousand, which is about a three point two five percent increase that year. And so as part of the revised budget on the right-hand most column, we're posing a revision to increase our salary costs to eighty-six million, five hundred and eighty-seven, sorry, five hundred and eighty thousand. A part of that is a recommended practice to include an amount for the increment allowance. There are approximately three hundred teachers who are not at the top of their salary grid. And so there's potential for increased salaries throughout the year that we would include a budgeted amount for. And in order to do so, we've adjusted our supplies and services to twenty-three million, eight hundred thousand. Other piece to note is an increased potential income from the business company. And just looking at our other salaries, we felt based on the actual results and the comparison that Secretary Treasurer Velestak and I did, that the budgets in those line items was appropriate based on our actual results. Looking on page nineteen of the embargoed package is a detailed breakdown of the original annual budget passed on May sixth, changes that have happened to date. And then the gray column is what the revised budget is being proposed for, for our supplies and services. So reducing our supplies and services to twenty-three million, eight hundred thousand creates a budgeted surplus of five hundred and sixty-two thousand for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which would increase the internally restricted reserves from one million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand to two million and fourteen thousand. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Trustees, this agenda item was presented for with the recommendation attached. It is in the separate package. And when we are ready to entertain a motion, we can talk about that. It's in that separate pink package. I don't know if trustees have any questions for Acting Secretary Treasurer Talan before we look at moving on with this agenda item. All right, seeing none. Is there anyone who wants to put forward the motion that's recommended in the package? That the, yes, Vice Chair Kershaw, thank you. You're moving the motion that the Board of Education approves the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual facilities grant preliminary spending plan as presented. I'm looking for a second or seconded by trustee Hickson. Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. That's all?
I have a different motion. I have that the Board of Education approved the additions to the budget reduction plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Perfect story. My bad. I don't know why I had that. Sorry, the, the Board of Education, please scratch all of that, Chelsea. So Vice Chair Kershaw is, is moving that the Board of Education approved the additions to the budget reduction plan for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented, seconded by trustee Hickson and moved by Vice Chair Kershaw. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Vice Chair Kershaw.
I would just like to say that I appreciate all of the work that's been put into this by all of our staff, Acting Secretary Treasurer Talan, Superintendent Nixon. I feel like moving forward, we'll have a budget that will, will leave us balanced at the end of the year. And I know, I think as a board, we recognize that this has been challenging for, for everybody, but I feel confident that we have done what we can to address those challenges and not impact students directly. So I will be voting in favor.
Thank you very much. Trustees, any other discussion on this motion before we look at calling the question? Yes, trustee Karpuk.
I'd like to also extend my appreciation to Secretary Treasurer Ray Velasquez for helping us out and providing the additional support and that's much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries anonymously. Thank you so much. Acting Secretary Treasurer Talan, item next is yours as well.
Thank you, Chair Grieve. The next item is back in the regular public boarding package on page forty-seven. So as per board policy seventeen, transportation of students, the board shall ensure that transportation services are provided with due regard to safety, efficiency and length of ride. The October seventh public board meeting, there was an update provided on the school bus safety week as well as information regarding the kindergarten students' safety training. And during that meeting, it was asked if other students received training and what is covered in that in those training sessions. And so this is just an update on that question. So kindergarten students, as previously discussed, do receive specific training, which sometimes includes grade one students if there is a split bus. Safety topics include the big seven school bus safety rules, how to properly sit on the bus and their responsibility to behave both on the bus and at the bus stop. They also learn what the different flashing lights mean, what the different driver hand signals mean, and they're provided an opportunity to experience a front and a rear door or rear or side door evacuation under supervision. Grade one and older students do not receive the same safety training as kindergarten students, but they do receive safety training each year. So older students who ride the bus as part of their day to get to and from school are provided yearly refresher training by regular drivers. And so the window for that training starts in September. And so the window for that training starts in September with the expectations that drivers completed by the end of October. And those older students learn things such as the riding rules, general expectations for behavior. What and where to find any onboard emergency equipment with a general explanation of how to use it. How to and when to activate the parking brake should the driver be coming incapacitated. How to use the two way radio and a detailed loading and unloading procedures, as well as practical training on both. Front and rear or side door evacuations, along with information on when to use the secondary exits. Report was provided for information, but I have to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you very much for this report. Before I turn to everybody for questions, I also want to thank all those who. Ensured that the bus safety video was online again, and I saw that there was a lot of interaction on the SC seventy three website, so thank you very much for that as well. Trustees, do you have any questions on this agenda item that was presented for information purposes? Trustee Karpak.
I'd just like to thank Acting Secretary Treasurer Talon for this report. It really does make me feel that we are being very comprehensive and making sure that our students are prepared for when they're riding the bus. And I really do appreciate knowing how much our students do learn with the refresher training. And I'm very happy with with the report and the detail that it went into, so thank you.
And I have to admit that a lot of the work was Director Chris Jensen and Assistant Manager Clark provided the information for the report.
Thank you very much. Trustees, any other comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much for that report. We'll move on to item next, which is yours as well, the addition to the agenda nine point four.
Chair Greve, through you to the boards, the under board policy two, the board shall approve the annual spending plan for the annual facilities grant. And I will ask Director McDonald to come up to speak to the twenty twenty five, twenty six annual facility grant preliminary spending plan.
Yes, thank you. And if so, these grant is meant to be spent on several categories as defined by the Ministry of Education, childcare, including accessibility upgrades, asbestos abatement. Electrical upgrades, exterior wall system upgrades, HVAC upgrades, interior construction upgrades, plumbing upgrades, roofing upgrades and site upgrades. And the board has seen similar reports from myself and a little early this year, mainly because we've got a couple of projects that have some extremely long delivery items. That need to be in place for September of next year, and in particular, the South Cam secondary elevator lift, we do have a student coming in electric wheelchair. And we are not confident that the old stair climber wheelchair access devices will be able to handle. The wheelchair mainly because of the weight of the batteries and the elevator itself is quite long lead time. So that's why I present this to you tonight. You'll see all the various categories with the current budget allocations that we have assigned, and you'll also notice at the bottom of the table, there's an amount. I've labeled funds currently unallocated. Typically, what we do is we allocate a lot of the money. But we don't allocate it all at this time until we start seeing where pricing is coming in and have a bit of room to adjust budgets as needed. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director McDonald. I will say that I feel like I've ruined the ending to a movie because I already read the recommendation earlier. Anyway. Be like Groundhog Day over here, trustee Karpak and then trustee Kang.
I know that you probably don't have this number off the top of your head, and I know it's a question that's been asked by a lot of people. How much, if you were to be able to do all the repairs and facility maintenance that really needs to be done, how much more would you need from the AFG?
Start with lots, try to get more specific. When you look at the Ministry of Education Childcare's CAM system. I believe the last time we looked, all of our total deficiencies, which is in their system, what they say is work that we need to catch up on, it was somewhere around a hundred and fifty million dollars. So it's it's hard to say. We also would run into issues if they gave us twenty million dollars a year, we physically could not spend it. Just due to our own capacity as well as the capacity of local contractors. If we could double this amount, I think that would be a great start and would allow us to get in a much better spot than we are. So I'm hoping that answers your question.
Thank you. It does.
Trustee Kang.
Same question as trustee Karpak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from trustees for Director McDonald or anyone around the table before we look at entertaining a motion? All right, trustees, this agenda item was for recommendation. I know I've already read it aloud. This evening, is there someone who wants to recommend the motion or sorry, oh my gosh, move the motion that is in our package for recommendation. Moved by trustee Karpak, seconded by Vice Chair Kershaw, and that recommendation. Chelsea is the Board of Education approves the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six annual facilities grant preliminary spending plan as presented. Any discussion on the motion on the floor this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Thank you. And opposed, seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Does that conclude your agenda items for this evening?
It does, thank you.
It does. Thank you very much for the for your reports this evening. Moving on to item next, under new business, we have. The item that was lifted from this evening's consent agenda by trustee Sim, which was AP four five one point four four. I don't know if trustee Sim, if you want to speak to the lifting of that agenda item or if that item from the consent agenda. Or whether it was just around language, I will maybe leave it with you, trustee Sim, and then turn to Dr. Nixon on that.
Yeah, it was. It was just really about language and maybe with new legislation and just some tidying up. On that, but maybe I can defer that to Superintendent Nixon for comment.
Through you, Board Chair Greve, to trustee Sim and to the the board and the community, I would concur that we. Could probably take this particular AP out in light of. Some information we received in camera that that we will respond to in terms of a request by the Aboriginal Education Council. Who provided a letter to the board to be responded to and brought forward in public. So it's timely to to take this particular administrative procedure out and revisit it.
Thank you very much. So that was something that will be revisited by a committee or and then brought back to the Board of Education. Great. Thank you. Trustee Sim, does that conclude your questions about that? Excellent. Thank you so much. Moving on to item next, we have no business writing from arising from public inquiries, reports from committees and chair. Sorry, I'm just looking. There we go. Want to make sure that I get everything covered off here. So I wanted to just thank trustee Hickson for the Cassinett article about the new health academy at Brocklehurst Secondary School. I know that there was a lot of excitement and conversation around that. Bus Safety Week is this week, October twenty first through twenty fifth. Thank you to Director Chris Jensen and her team for their work on bus safety. On the video used provincially for training in bus safety and for developing training for staff and students who drive. Or ride the bus. And again, I wanted to again express my gratitude for that video being available on the SC seventy three website as well. English Language Learners Parent Engagements session will be October the twenty second. Parents are invited to join the session. You can get more information on the SC seventy three website. Other special days for parents and staff, we do have a district pro D day on October the twenty fifth, so professional learning. Means that there will be no school on that day. Halloween is October the thirty first. Definitely have some fun. It is Diwali, also known as, sorry, which is the Hindi festival of light with variations celebrated in other Indian religions. It symbolizes the spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil and the knowledge over ignorance. We also are celebrating November as National Career Development Month, November first through thirtieth. Raft River Outdoor Classroom grand opening is October the eighteenth. I know that that's something that that community will be very excited to to participate in. I want to thank trustee Sim and Superintendent Nixon for sharing remarks at the opening of this amazing outdoor classroom. That was delivered over multiple years by Elizabeth Shook and supported wholeheartedly by the community of Clearwater, who raised over two hundred thousand dollars to build this classroom. I know that was one of my first, it was my first trip actually out to Clearwater when I got to hear about the idea. And the suggestion around outdoor learning in your community, trustee Sim. And again, I think that that gratitude is very warranted for the work that's been done. Not only by district staff, but members of the community as well. I wanted an opportunity to share that there was a DPAC letter that was actually presented or shared to us, and so each trustee has a copy of it. But it's really titled the BCD PAC Coalition, and so it was a letter that was written in partnership with. Excuse me, in partnership, which really talks about advocacy, which was titled Fund Portables, Build Schools and Fix Education Funding, and it was an open letter. So in the in camera package, we had a chance to see it, but I wanted a chance to bring it up because I understand that this has actually been made public and we wanted to. Know, let people know that this was available. It was something that was shared at DPAC and Chris Ponte, who is a part of DPAC, has been. An active participant in this group and a part of the advocacy as well. And so really, the letter, I think, is very clear in terms of what it outlines. The need for obviously the funding of portables, the building of schools and the fixing of our education funding system is something that we as a board and as a district are very aware of in terms of the costs that can be. Seen by districts throughout our province and. The list of the group who participated are Laura Kwong, the chair, New Westminster DPAC, Nicole Baker, the president of the Central Okanagan DPAC, and Chris Ponte, past chair here at the SC seventy three. DPAC as well, Bonnie McBride, Chair of Council Thompson DPAC, Tom Davies, President of SUK DPAC. And Morton Rand Hendrickson, Executive Member at Large of the Burnaby DPAC, were all participants in this joint letter. So I just wanted that to be there for information purposes, and that concludes my chair report for this evening. Which moves us on to trustee reports, inquiries and good news. Trustee Sim, I will go to you first.
Oh, I, yeah, are you sure you don't want to go to trustee Kang? I thought he had his thing there first.
Oh, I, well, I didn't write it down in any particular order, but I can absolutely go to, I just.
I didn't know if we do alphabetical or what.
I can, yes, I can go to trustee Kang. I will go to trustee Kang first and then back to you, trustee Sim. Yes, trustee Kang.
Thank you, Chair Greve. I will pass this email on to Superintendent Nixon, but I will send an email from Amy Hilliard from the city of Kamloops earlier today. About an inquiry about transit for teens here in Kamloops. In her email, she explained that multiple municipalities free transit for youth age twelve to fifteen, eighteen as of right now. This includes cities such as Victoria, Pencton and Vernon. Providing this free transit has a few key reasons, such as access to education opportunities, promoting independence, encouraging community engagement. Reducing environmental impact and supporting mental health. At this time, she stated that the funds were available at the city of Kamloops through the Builder Savior Communities Fund, and she's hoping. Through operations staff or whatever, that maybe this could be something that could be brought to them. And the service be provided to our students in the district. So I thought I'd just share that and I will share that with Superintendent Nixon as well.
Thank you, trustee Kang. Trustee Sim.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to just report on a couple of visits. One was to have attended the Student Voice last week along with trustee Kang. Which is always terrific. We've got a whole new crew of young voices. And I wanted to share some of the highlights that they spoke about quite passionately. The first one is the enthusiasm for the indigenous inclusion and the education. And how much that they're enjoying that as part of their curriculum. And in fact, they're enjoying it so much is that they're like, you know, keep refreshing it because sometimes it's getting a little bit stale in some courses. And they are very, very eager for just that expansion of some of those curriculum opportunities and different ways of learning. The other comment that they spoke quite passionately about was about the cell phone restrictions, which they called a cell phone ban, but whatever. And their overall comments were that students are paying more attention. There was more work being done. And that there was a lot more enthusiasm for being in the classroom and it felt like the beginning of school was really quite smooth. On the flip side, they did sort of caution about some things that maybe we do need to pay attention about is that there is still work that requires electronics. And that phones have always been the small computer in the pocket, and so now that we've removed those small computers from the classroom is that there are some shortages of. Of electronics and maybe not enough Chrome, Chromebooks going around. So they had some really interesting things and they also felt that some of the Chromebooks maybe weren't as nimble. To keep up with some of the ways that they wanted to express themselves through technology in terms of reports. Or presentations or movies or anything like that. So did some cautionary tales, but really positive feedback that that was. More about the logistics of being in classrooms as opposed of needing the dependency of having the phone for the phone. So I wanted to share that. And the other comment that came up was just some review about maybe grade sevens being in in the schools and just wondered if that was still something that SD seventy three was keen on. And then the proficiency scale and just getting used to that, and I'm sure that Mr. Keenline will report out on some of those comments and how's that is being translated for our youth. And also, it really was very nice to have Superintendent Nixon join for the outdoor classroom. It was a huge community event and. Lots of accolades and just another testament to what community can do when they they work together. Speaking of Raft River, one comment that was brought up by some of the parents that I met is that they were disappointed that Raft River is not hosting a single sports game this fall. And there was sort of a lot of chagrin about that because often this is the only time when parents in Clearwater and Raft River and even Baydenby can watch their kids play, but the. Schedule has been very centered around a Kamloops host schedule. So I think that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, trustee Sim. Trustee Hickson.
I just want to give a super quick shout out to Chelsea Eisner for helping me with this Kemps Thompson School District Health Sciences Academy article for Cassinett. She did the bulk of the work and I really appreciate this going out because I think it's really important for the community to know more about our academies, so.
Thank you very much, trustee Hickson. Seeing no other trustee reports, inquiries and good news, we have no motions, notice of meetings, scheduled upcoming meetings, SC seventy three Business Company. Director's meeting actually occurred today, earlier today. The Audit Committee meeting was, we did not meet today, but we will be meeting again with a date to come in the future. District Employee Engagement Committee meeting will be October the twenty second tomorrow, Provincial Council, October twenty fifth to twenty sixth. The next regular public board meeting will occur on Monday, November the fourth, here at this location at the School Board Office at thirteen eighty three Ninth Avenue, and I will seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Karpak, seconded by trustee Ophi. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great evening.